Progress. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is July 14th, 2022. I'm calling the meeting to order, and it's currently 7:04 PM. I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. This is something we're going to start doing from here on in. It was part of the program before, or the agenda was before it dropped off, but we're going to bring it back. And I'm going to ask Tim to lead us on.
President of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice.
Thank you. And I do that because I have Mr. Weber, who was Mr. Heerfire, who passed. I figured he'd like to do that. Alrighty, Commission Business. The first item we have is a discussion of the Public Act. Oh, roll call. Do we need to do a roll call just for this discussion?
Yeah, it is a regular meeting, so it should have a roll call. I'm sorry, I don't have my list in front of me, because I came without anything. I didn't even bring my book.
Chairman Beal is here. Vice Chair, Dorsey.
I can read it if you like.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Andrew Legg, Nanny, alternate.
Absent.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Diane Dorsey.
Here.
Joan Beal.
Here.
John Michael O'Brien.
Absent.
Peter Zarabozo.
Absent.
Sandra Coppola.
Here.
Scott Hamel.
Absent.
Steve Beal Jr.
Here.
Timothy Zigmat.
Welcome, Steve. Okay. On to business. Alrighty, so first item is the discussion of the Public Act Number 21-1. An Act Concerning Responsible and Equitable Regulation of Adult Use Cannabis. Public Act 22-103, an Act Concerning Cannabis. And Public Act 22-104, an Act Concerning Cannabis Advertising and the Department of Consumer Protection's Recommendation Regarding Various Revisions to the Consumer Protection Statutes. A presentation will be given by council, and the Commission will be receiving information regarding cannabis establishment uses. Public comment will be permitted, and the resident and property owners and other interested persons may attend and offer their comment. Okay. And we have with us our attorney, Jennifer Ball, who's going to be making the presentation. So, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to try to speak as loudly as I can. We're talking about important topics tonight. And I know that Attorney Genofrio met with you some time ago, as well as the Town Council, to give you a primer. I'm going to revisit some of what he talked to you about. And then I want to move into, you should have received an email from me. I hope you all just took a look at that. I want to explain, when we get to the list that I gave you, I'm going to explain to you what it is. Okay? But just again, to go back to revisiting the law itself. RARCA is almost a year old, or actually, it is a year old. I think it passed the end of June of last year. Took effect in July, portions of it. So, we're going to talk about that public act, which is Public Act 21-1, which was, of course, codified in our statutes, as well as a couple of public acts coming out of the last legislative session with regard to department provisions, the same, concerning cannabis. So, Public Acts 22-103 and 22-104, they were attached to the email that I sent to you. So, in terms of RARCA itself, and I'm not going to go through, I have my own memo that I've been using. I'm not going to go through everything with you. You'll recall, I'm sure, medicinal marijuana was passed some years ago now, PUMA, Talented Use. And that law, that act, allowed for producers and dispensaries of medicinal marijuana. So, what RARCA does is it does add a number of additional licenses. And I'll talk more specifically about those, because I do think that that's an important part of the decision that you have before you about whether to permit any particular cannabis use in town. But just to give you an overview of the public act, obviously, as I indicated in my email to you, there are portions of it that concern criminal penalties, that concern treatment services, that concern social equity. And I don't want to get too much into that, because I think that for our purposes tonight, we really need to, because your moratorium's about to run, and you really need to focus on, are you going to allow some of these particular licensed uses or not within town? So, I want to get us to the point where we're talking about that more substantive information that I gave you, as far as what other municipalities have done. But I will mention a little bit about possession and prior convictions again, just so that you have an understanding of what's in the law. This is a refresher of what Jeffrey covered. But so, possession of cannabis by adults aged 21 became legal under RARCA last year. Adults can't have more than 1.5 ounces of cannabis on that person, no more than five ounces in their homes, or locked in their car trunk or glove box. Retail sales of cannabis are aiming, and I know that there's some recent information out about this. They've been releasing press releases about cannabis through the Department of Consumer Protection. That's information that you can find online. There's a great cannabis website that has all the information about the law and what's happening with the processing of the licenses, and so on and so forth. And I know that folks have read many articles probably about the lottery system that was put into place for the law of the licenses. But in terms of retail sales, they do anticipate, obviously, that retail sales are going to start this year. The sale, manufacturing, cultivation of cannabis, aside from homegrown, requires a license from the state. There are regulations. So, products that contain certain THC, what Delta-8 THC, Delta-9 THC, and Delta-10 are considered cannabis, and may only be sold by licensed retailers. Individuals who are not licensed by the state may not sell it. Individuals may not, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the gifting. I think you probably saw some of the newspaper articles, and it in particular had a problem with these huge events, these gifting events, these pop-up events, and the legislature responded, and that's part of Public Act 22-103. So, we'll talk about that. But patients, in terms of homegrown, patients who are participating in the medicinal marijuana program are permitted to cultivate up to six cannabis plants, three mature, three immature indoors within their homes. All adults 21 and over are permitted to grow similar number of plants indoors within their homes beginning July 1st, 2023. The law does include requirements to keep the plant secure. And so, homegrown, up to a certain number of cannabis plants has been decriminalized. And so, that's an important point now. And then there's obviously the part portion of the law that are presented by convictions. So, certain cannabis-related convictions that occurred between January 1st to 2020 and October 1st to 2015 are automatically erased, and those seeking erasure of cannabis-related convictions outside of that period look at those required protection. There's the decriminalization of the first events. A first event is illegally manufactured, selling or possessing with intent to sell up to a certain amount. There's also the elimination, and this is important. This is an important piece, and something I think that has been talked about quite a bit at law enforcement level. There's the elimination of order of cannabis, or cannabis is the basis to stop or search. So, they can't, police cannot use that as a basis to stop and search. But smoking, inhaling, or ingesting cannabis while driving or riding in a rear vehicle is, of course, prohibited. There's a prohibition on landlords and property managers from refusing to rap based on conviction for possession of a certain amount of cannabis. As I indicated, there's an equity piece, there's a social equity council that was established, created by the legislation. And there's obviously programs now that are in place. There's been a lot of activity in this area that really hit the ground running. And there's programs in place and supports for social equity applicants in the cannabis market. And much of the law talks about this, this piece, this social equity piece. So, the law is intended to implement an equitable marketplace with requirements that are, certain requirements are, licenses are reserved for social equity applicants targeting communities that have been deemed to be most negatively impacted by the war on drugs. In terms of the tax structure, the law doesn't enact a tax rate structure on the retail sale that includes a lower source of revenue for municipalities. I know Jeffrey spoke to you about this. So, there's a 3% municipal sales tax that's directed to the town or city where the retail sale occurred, in addition to the 6.35 state sales tax. And then a tax that's based on the THC content of the product. And then there's a different tax rate for the different types of products. So, this generally means that Connecticut will have a 4% lower tax rate than New York and above the same as Massachusetts, where recreational use is also legal. In terms of the revenue to support economic opportunities in targeted communities, portions of the revenue obtained from retail sales are to be directed to communities that have been, again, most negatively impacted by the war on drugs through the Social Equity and Innovation Fund. Funding from the account is appropriated for use by the Social Equity Council to provide business capital, technical assistance for business startups and operations, workforce education, community investments. And the investments are not limited to the cannabis market. In terms of the revenue to support substance misuse prevention and recovery services, portions of the revenue obtained from retail sales of cannabis are to be directed to support substance misuse, prevention, treatment, and recovery services through the creation of the Prevention and Recovery Services Fund. And I will just mention, and I'll talk about this a little bit later more specifically, but in terms of the tax that the municipality takes in, it has to be directed towards certain things. So, I'll get to that piece of it. And it does include drug treatment programs, recovery programs. In terms of preventing underage use, there's an adaption of the state's framework regarding preventing access to alcohol by minors, now in the context of cannabis. So, there's certain, you know, misdemeanor-like misdemeanor structure. Enforcement of safe driving. This portion of law requires police to be trained in advanced roadside and pure driving enforcement, and allows for drug recognition expert evaluations to result in license suspensions. This means that drivers who are cleared on any substance, whether cannabis or otherwise, will be more quickly taken off the road, is the hope. There are advertising provisions that are quite significant, and that is part of both Public Acts 22-103 and 104. I'll put it goes out to you when we get to that point. By January 1st of 2023, the Alcohol and Drug Policy Council with the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services and Children and Families are required to make recommendations to the governor and legislature on efforts to root medical health and science-based harm reduction mitigation issues in the risk of cannabis addiction and report on the impact of legalization on education, mental health, and social and emotional health of the 21. With regard to the products, and there's some of this as well in the subsequent Public Acts. This portion of RARCA has strong requirements for product safety. Products have to be lab-tested and have strict packaging and labeling standards. Edible cannabis products are limited in terms of the amount of milligrams of THC per serving. And most other products are subject to a potency cap as well. Products are to be in child-safe packaging, and product types that appeal to children are supposed to be banned. In terms of employment, there are provisions about what an employer can do. As, of course, an employer can continue to enforce drug-free workplaces. And there's obviously a continued respect for the need of employers to maintain workplace safety. But the law does prohibit the off-work use of cannabis, and flourish from making an issue with regret to the off-work use of cannabis or taking adverse impact or adverse action rather against an employee or potential employee for use of THC. So, that's a somewhat involved part of the law, and obviously, will develop as, as time goes on. In terms of indoor air, cannabis and smoking and vaping are added to areas where tobacco smoking is restricted under the Indoor Clean Air Act. So, the law does expand the ban to any area of a facility, building, or establishment, including outdoor areas that are within 25 feet of the doorway, upper bowl, window, or area to take that, in addition to interior or retail access by public. And then that's, of course, the law bans smoking in the workplace. So, the medical marijuana program, the law does offer continued productions of that program. For example, producers and dispensaries that currently operate in the program, the medical marijuana program, may expand or convert their licenses for adult use, but they must prioritize serving the medical program. Medical marijuana users are able to purchase medical marijuana from any dispensary rather than to the one to which they're assigned. So, that's an important change. Cannabis use is prohibited in state parks, state beaches, and on state waters. As far as the Social Equity Council is concerned, as I indicated, I don't, I don't want to, the social equity piece is very involved. If you have particular questions, I don't know if any of you have read anything about the council itself and what they've done as far as regulations and such are concerned. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the social equity piece. I know that, again, there's been, there's been so many news articles about RARCA out there, including about the council and the work that the council has done. And one of the questions I have been getting a lot, and I'm going to point this out to you too when we get to the more recent Public Acts, but about the equity joint ventures, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. But if you do have particular questions with regard to the social equity piece, I'm happy to answer them. But I want to, again, get us to the point where we're talking about specific regulations, because it is, the RARCA is 303 pages long. So, I don't know if anybody opened up the link to kind of take a look. And that's why I gave you, I tried to guide you as far as the stuff I thought, well, let's, let's kind of identify the things that you may be less interested in, so you could kind of skip over those pages and get to the, you know, the stuff that concerns the authority of the commission. So, in terms of municipalities and zoning, obviously, the local officials play an important role in the implementation of legalization of cannabis at the local level. You can't control, the density cap was removed with Public Act 22-103. You can't control the number and the location of cannabis retailers in your town through zoning. And municipalities, and this is typically done by ordinance, can obviously determine where smoked dirty cannabis can be consumed. So, I'm going to turn my attention. I'm not going to talk about, Jeffrey probably covered the petitioning. Did he talk about that? He probably did. In terms of allowing the use, the ability to, the ability of the voters to put on the ballot question with regard to cannabis use, I'm not going to cover that. That's a very specific, that's very specific provisions, as of course, all similar was with regard to petitioning and getting a question on the ballot due. And so, we'll keep, we'll move past the little reference issue. In terms of then we'll talk about delivery and transport. So, with regard to delivery and transport, the RARCA does provide the following. That no municipality should prohibit delivery of cannabis to a consumer, qualifying patient, or caregiver where the delivery is made by retailer, hybrid retailer, dispensary facility, delivery service, microcultivator, or other person authorized to use such delivery pursuant to RARCA. No municipality shall prohibit the transport of cannabis to, from, or through such a municipality that any person licensed or registered pursuant to RARCA to transport cannabis. So, municipalities cannot prohibit the delivery of cannabis to consumers or qualifying medical marijuana patients or the caregivers if the delivery is made by someone authorized to do so. So, a delivery service is one of the definitions. And there's, and there is also transporter service. So, delivery service is a licensed delivery service, which may deliver cannabis and cannabis products from certain cannabis establishments to consumers or qualifying patients and caregivers. Transporter service, separate definition, separate license. A licensed transporter service may deliver cannabis and cannabis products from certain cannabis establishments to other cannabis establishments. So, one example that's given, part of the definition, is from a microcultivator to a dispensary. Another provision of the law. No municipality or local official shall condition any official action or accept any donation of monies or in kind from any cannabis establishment or from an individual or corporation that has applied for a license to open or operate a cannabis establishment in such municipality. No municipality shall negotiate or enter into a local host agreement with a cannabis establishment or a person that has applied for a license to open or operate a cannabis establishment in such municipality. So, obviously, this is a ban to being certain actions taken by the municipality and local, in terms of local host agreements. For about two, 30 days after the opening of a retailer, and this is something I know you're going to be very interested in, and I know all this is a refresher, that's why I'm trying to kind of zoom through it quickly. For up to 30 days after the opening of a retailer or hybrid retailer. So, the retail uses. A municipality may charge such retailer or hybrid retailer for any necessary and reasonable cost incurred by the municipality for provision of public safety services in relation to such opening, including, but not limited to, public safety costs incurred to direct traffic not to exceed $50,000. So, said another way, what the law allows is for your town, for the first 30 days after cannabis retailer or hybrid retailer, so somebody's like recreational and medicinal, for 30 days after they open, you could charge them up to $50,000 for any necessary and reasonable municipal cost for public safety services related to the opening, such as a police officer directing traffic. I'm not going to talk about the prohibition of smoking. Again, the smoking and the vaping, that's really an area that is best covered by ordinance. It's not something that would typically be done at the zoning level. So, we'll skip over the law related to that. So, in terms of, and I'm only covering this, again, this is something at the town council level, really ultimately, is an issue, I think. But I know that there's a lot of interest in the regulation generation. So, I do just want to revisit with you, again, what the law provides. As indicated in the overview that I provided, what the law allows is the imposition of a 3% municipal sales tax on the sale of cannabis that applies in addition to the state sales tax. So, that's important to keep in mind. It's beyond the state sales tax, it's an additional tax. It's administered through DRS, so the Department of Regulatory Services, though each municipality is responsible for collecting the appropriate amounts, as identified by DRS. So, the bill does require, or the act does require, each municipality which cannabis retailer, hybrid retailer, or microcultivator is located, to submit to the DRS commissioner at least annually the name and contact information of the individual designated by the municipality to receive notifications regarding the tax. And then the DRS commissioner has to notify these designated individuals of the tax amount reported due from each cannabis retailer, hybrid retailer, and microcultivator that's located in their respective municipalities. So, they're responsible, municipalities are then responsible for collecting the tax amounts from each payer. So, that's how it works. So, in terms of, I mentioned to you that there are, again, restrictions on the use of funds. The amounts permitted become part of the municipality's general revenue. And they may only be used for the following purposes, and there are six. Number one, streetscape improvements and other neighborhood developments in communities where cannabis retailers, hybrid retailers, or microcultivators are located. Two, education programs for youth employment and training programs in the municipality. Three, services for individuals living in the municipality who are released from Department of Correction custody probation or parole. Four, mental health reduction services. Five, youth service bureaus and municipal juvenile review boards. And six, community civic engagement efforts. So, those are the only uses for which the funds may be used.
So, just to, just basically, Jennifer, just basically, so you have a cannabis store. So, he's going to collect one for the state tax and one for the municipal tax, which means that basically, you're going to have to have somebody in charge of handling the municipal tax. And that becomes their nightmare about keeping track. And they have to keep in touch with the state to let them know how much money they brought in. And also, they have to keep it, I imagine, a separate escrow account, you know, in case they need to spend it on one of these things. And, but that municipal tax is only 3% of the purchase.
Yes, it's 3% in addition to the sales tax.
Yeah.
So, I do want to share with you, so I have, obviously, I've been making the rounds in the other municipalities that I do work for. And I, I think I may have even mentioned this to you once before, but I do recall when the initial webinar, or even that webinar, when RARCA was passed, there was a webinar that was given, there was some participation. One of the presenters was from the governor's office. There was a PowerPoint that was shared. There was at that time in anticipation that there would be 150 to 200 retail establishments in the state. And the projected revenue was $4 million for each retailer, the annual revenue. But I did, I did recently receive information, and this was through a gentleman who is one of the owners of the Nady Health and Wellness, which operates in New Haven. And I believe also, they also have a program for locations as well. And he came to speak to the East Haven Planning and zoning commission and town council. And he represented that And he represented that, um, retail establishments, so currently he's running, um, medicinal marijuana dispensary. I believe that he is pursuing, or possibly has even obtained at this point, a hybrid retailer license. Um, but he did represent that, that retailers can make as much as fifteen million dollars a year. Pretty soon.
Yeah, but what's the cost overall? I mean, when you start looking at some of these things you're allowed to sit, you spend in our education, you train, services to parolees, mental health. You know, you're, that cost is gonna be way higher, I think, than any three percent. I, I don't see the. Yeah, well, yeah.
Why can't town get figures from them? Uh, they, they have to report sales tax to the state. That report.
Right, and I, I do think that's what the language of the act does suggest. That that's the way the transfer of information is gonna occur, um, that there's gonna be oversight. Obviously through the Department of Revenue Services, um, to make sure that, that, you know. All monies are accounted for, everything's being captured.
I would also.
So they gotta pay quarterly taxes.
Well, that's all.
I'd also like to point out that when we're talking about that fifty million, talking about four dispensaries right now in the entire state of Connecticut. So once you have two hundred, um, you know, that's really gonna give you, exactly. So I mean, it's not like we get one dispensary here in town, we're beginning three percent of fifty million. I'm sure that numbers are gonna change drastically, once you start seeing all these applications, businesses up and running.
Well, the other thing too, I don't know, for me, it's, it's just the burden just seems to be.
That's, I, I follow your point of, uh, your point there with having to hire somebody now to deal with. Figuring out what our taxes are that are coming to it now. From what I was listening to earlier, our police officers are no longer qualified to be, to be able to tell off some of these high while they're driving. Now we're gonna have to hire a new specialty officer to deal with, you know. So special U I's of being stoned while you're on the road. So that would be another expensive town.
Yeah, cause I guess.
All casted.
But I, I don't know. I guess, you know, I, I appreciate what, what you're sharing with us, but I just, it just strikes me that three percent. Uh, it just seems like the burden is on the, the town man, the carry of the day, Chris.
Well, I, the reason I, I, I offered, uh, the information to, I, I think, again, the, the government. You know, Mr. Pendolino, when he spoke, um, you know, he's referencing his own business, right? And I, and I do think that that's an important point, what Commissioner Rubin said. You know, currently there are a very limited number of, uh, medicinal dispensaries. And when you talk about what the governor's numbers were, the governor's office numbers were initially. It, it could be the reason for the difference in, in the projection is again, because they were saying. That the goal is to have, that they anticipate that there be maybe as many as a hundred and fifty to two hundred over time. And that the revenue would only be four million, again, because of that competition likely, right? Um, so I don't, I don't know, I just pointed that out.
Yeah, no, I mean.
That's where that, you know, I think probably both are good sources. Because I know with, uh, Puma, when they passed Puma, I was getting, I, I was subscribed to all the emails. As it went through hearings, the qualitative use against medicinal marijuana law. And I know there was a lot of research put into the program and, and it is an excellent program in terms of, um. You know, the level of detail of it and how some of it is operated and so on and so forth. So I know, you know, that, that there are folks in the government who have a lot of information, they've done a lot of research. But then we also have a very, a very successful, you know, medicinal dispensary operator. And, and I can't describe to you the, the information he shared, um, with regard to data operations, um, at my request. Um, you know, he was very thoughtful of the request because I thought it was important that, um, that they hear that piece of it. You know, how, what, what the security entails and, and, and really, you know, what's happening inside. And, uh, it was, it was, um, a very educational experience in terms of the level of, of. Detaility share as far as security was concerned. And I think it was helpful. And so, um, that is something too that was taped, you know, that was recorded, I'm happy to share that with you. Um, you know, we didn't have, why didn't have as many, um, identified inquiries. Um, for your town as we, we've had in other areas of the state. So, but Chris does wanna speak, cause Chris has been, uh, doing some research and talking to some folks about this as well.
Okay.
Yeah, one, one thing that's kinda silly and then serious, um, hearing that many retail operations. Makes me think every one of our bus drivers is gonna be like the dude from The Simpsons.
Yeah.
I don't pause on it.
They not have a choice.
Yeah, I, uh, I've had some conversations informally with all seven of our town council members. And not a single one was in favor of a retail location in town. Well, they just did not think it was a fit, the three percent they didn't believe was worth the overall that we're talking about. Um, I haven't, they've given me opinions on other parts of this, I don't know if they'd rather have me speak now or wait until Attorney Capole gets to them. Maybe to you, I mean, I can say it while I'm up here, which is, they all were, I should say, six of seven were in favor of. A growing facility. And then if a growing facility would also have the delivery service, um, the delivery service. I believe may also potentially have a, a sales tax kicker to it as well. If it's in the right location and if it's done properly. Now, I think that is very important, everyone here. I know for certain that the two towns right next to us, New Britain and Maryland are both working very hard on facilities right now. Um, kinda my take is from an economic development standpoint is, if it's gonna be regulated, it's gonna be in an industrial area, it's not gonna affect people. I don't see a reason why we shouldn't at least think about dipping our toe in the water on this. Because it's, whether, wherever you stand on it, it's coming.
Well, yeah, but you're not talking about the retail.
No, no, I'm not, I'm truly talking, no, I'm truly talking about, I'm talking about a growing facility. I'm talking about essentially what would amount to taking two things in rural that we've done historically very well for a long time. Which is growing and making things and essentially bringing it together into one roof.
Yeah.
Um, I, I happen to have a particular, um, property owner, which is kind of off the beaten path industrial property. Which this commission actually approved about an eighty thousand square foot building for him about a year and a half ago. This wasn't even in the mix. His property potentially could be something that might make sense if this commission said, hey, great, we'd like to do this again. I think it would have to be done very carefully from a language perspective, because I think if we did this, we would want to do this once. I wanna say, again, probably very specifically written. Um, and I know, again, I, I don't know that much about facilities, but I know that they're highly regulated, they're very highly secured. And the fact that really it would be essentially a manufacturing building, it just happens to have the marijuana piece to it. So I just, I.
But nobody would know it's there.
They really wouldn't, I mean.
You wouldn't want them to know it's there.
You, you wouldn't to a large degree as well, I mean, this, this, this gentleman, interestingly enough, has, was involved in the process of Massachusetts. So he does know, and he would not be an operator himself, he's a property owner.
Yeah.
But he's been contacted by a couple of different people that are going for licenses to be growers. So from that, again, the only thing I can say is I know that they've reached out to me. I know that the inclination I've gotten so far has been positive from the council, um, on the growing facility. Again, right place, right situation, that the retail was not someone they were interested in. Again, I, I have not had a chance to talk to economic development commission about this, only because we haven't had any meetings recently.
No.
And it's just been something where, in summertime of forums, but I wanted to at least give you my two cents on it. Because I, I do know the other communities are working very hard. I don't want to say if we can hide it, but if it's, if it's an industrial area, it's not right, well, for instance, it's just not the long and four road.
No, no.
But if there's another spot where you can make it work, where it's off the beaten path, there's enough between the areas to make it viable. I truly think it makes sense from economic development standpoint, from what I got from the town council, I believe they also believe it is worth looking at. Um, again, I, I, I give you that for whatever it's worth, but I did wanna let you know that because I know that that is important. Because th- this is, it's a community, it's a decision made by this body, but it is a community decision, because it will be. It might potentially.
But you can tap it by saying you're only a long way along.
Tap it, or, or you could say, um, if it is in a certain zone, within a certain distance of X. And that may be a area of zone that maybe there's.
Well, let me, let me approach it this way, because really what, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to figure out retail or no retail. Just, you know, growing or no growing. So, I mean, let's look at what we have information from Jennifer so far about the retail portion. I guess I would just do a straw poll and say, is the commission, um, given, um, to pursuing. The possibility of having retail, I mean, just as a straw poll, is that something that you feel this town should have? Given the information that we have. Straw poll, that's fine.
And if, if, if you did it, then you would be. Pushing it down to a rural area somehow.
Well, now talking about the, well. Well, we're talking about, we're talking about the, we're talking about the retail. Yeah.
Yeah, two thousand feet or twenty five hundred feet away from school or whatever.
An attorney, do you know you can do that? If you say highly low retail, it'll only get X area, or?
Well, yes, yeah, of course you can. The other thing is too, is I do, I do think, just because I have been reading so many minutes of samples. Um, I do think that, that some towns are allowing cultivation and they're waiting on retail. Um, because they wanna see, you know, what happens, how the retail moves out. Um, I think there's, you know, there's certain concerns with regards to retail, um, in particular traffic. That, that may flow around if there's not many retailers in the state. Um, there's that concern in terms of location, what is the right location as far as, you know, the traffic needs. And the activity that they draw. So they wanna see, you know, what happens in other communities before passing on that use. So, you know, of course, as you know, cause I know all of you are very seasoned, um, on, on, uh, text amendments of years zoning regulations. If you, if you wanted to allow certain uses and not others, that is of course something that you can do. It's not that you have to accept all, you know, all cannabis establishment uses that are within the act. So, um, you know, and you will see when you, when we look at some of the samples, what some communities have done in that regard.
Yeah.
I, I almost see it being similar to what this body has just done with self storage. Take a look at it and say, okay, it will be X zone, it will be X size, et cetera. And that this body controls exactly where it is and what it is. And, and, and again, because it's essentially what you're putting together, that's your regulation. I don't think it necessarily would be spot zoning per se, cause you, you're the body that's saying this is what we're gonna allow. Yeah, and, and, and then I think that's the, the way to do it, if, if it's an avenue you wanna go, yeah, we, we take a look at it and then figure out what makes the most sense. Because yes, I mean, this is something without a doubt, you want it in one spot, one spot only, you wanna make sure that it's the right spot. If you get on the road. Because no, I mean, for instance, uh, Yankee Gas has their tank farm, used to have the tank farm on Four Rod Road.
Mm-hmm.
Great property. Not a good spot for this, you got houses all over the place.
So, Tim, going back to the retail aspect, cause I just wanted to do the straw poll, cause I'd like to just stay focused on the commissions. Are, are you saying retail, yes, no?
I'd say no, because I think that was restricted so much. I don't see how it would be restricted that, that much.
Diane, what do you think?
I think I'm actually open minded to it, but that my preference would be to wait a little bit. Um, to see if in fact the, um, estimated gross sales are in fact what. Estimated, um, because three percent of four million dollars is quite a lot of money. Um, and while three percent seems like a small amount, um, from a percentage basis. Um, it could end up being, um, more for the town than what we're thinking. Um, it disappoints me that it's only three percent. I thought that, um, there would be maybe some flexibility for the towns to have their own. Uh, additional taxation, that doesn't seem to be the case. But, um, I think of the cultivation as, um. Agriculture and, um, so there, the area that comes to mind for me. That might be a suitable area would be the Chamberlain Highway P O D. Like that south end, that's. You know, maybe that could be the, um, only agricultural use, um. With an industrial layer, I don't know, you know, um, but, uh, you know, it's kind of a crossover between. Industrial and agricultural, um, so I, I'm a little, I, I think we should be open minded to. Um, areas that might not necessarily be just industrial. So I still have a cap.
In, in our zoning regs, the P O D is industrial. So again.
Yeah, I'm, but I'm, uh, P O D is not the right zone, um.
Yeah, plant office development, yeah. Yeah, and again, I, 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 I think it makes sense, I mean, really to look at which properties make sense and then which zones to take in, and does that make sense? If so, how do you make it work? So yes, it, it is, and, and I've looked at it from the, is it manufacturing, is it agriculture? It's kind of a little bit both, and, and because of the, the regulated part, I think. And I think they've put the, the percentage kickers in there to try to make it more appetizing. Um, but again, it's a question of where, where, where is the money more important than the negative effects? And, and again, I don't have the answer to that by any means, especially when it comes to the retail.
I think we're gonna deal with the negative effects whether we, um, have retail sales or not. Um, because people are gonna get it in other towns and they're still gonna be coming through Berlin. Um, so, uh, I think we're still gonna see negative effects from it. Um, the, uh, but the reason that I'm open, open to the retail sales. Is there's a dispensary on the Berlin Turnpike for medical marijuana that you would almost never know that that's what it is. And, um, the way that they've handled that, uh, makes sense to me. Because it's part of a medical, um, plaza, there's other medical, um, businesses that share the same building. Um, and I think it, you know, for that particular retail sale, uh, it makes sense. Um, but, you know, once it's opened up for the whole world to be able to buy, uh, the, the whole scene might change. But, um, I, I think that the way that they've done the medical dispensary, uh, was done thoughtfully. And, um, it doesn't, it's not offensive.
Absolutely, one, one of the actual first phone calls I got when this passed was actually from John Recidi. Um, because again, he has retail space, he has it. Um, and I, again, I, I mentioned to him the fact that we're having discussions, if it was before him, but yeah, I mean, he. I, I'm sure he would happily put one of the, the new building that is on the turnpike.
Yeah.
Again, I don't know if it would benefit otherwise, but I mean, that's, in, in my mind, that's the spot it probably would end up if we allowed retail.
In my head, I could think of obvious spots that would self-convulsion would bring in, you know, so.
Anyway, Brian, what do you think?
I have a couple of thoughts, I mean, I think about retail, um. I think Diane makes some good points, um, says maybe wait. I think Diane makes some good points, because maybe wait and see. At the same time, I can also see what I think about enforcement and actually being able to do it. And then can you see farming dynamics having a different fragrance to it very quickly? I mean, it might be inevitable anyways, but. On the free percent, I do think that's a track, that might just, the thing that I don't like about it is that we have very little saying how it's spent. We got more control over where we got to spend it as far as what we thought the need in the town and where we best go. This would definitely be more favorable to me. Also, as far as location. Recreational marijuana, as far as I know, with us starting the medical field right now, it can't be grown in an open field. Can't be grown in a greenhouse. It has to be grown in a secured warehouse with big fences around it and security. So I don't know if I think a more. If you were to consider it as far as just for cultivation, I think an area that is already, you know. Fits that bill of having those industrial building there where it just blend in might be more desirable.
So. So the retail you're open to or the retail you're leaning?
The retail I'm leaning against, but I am, I would be in favor, like Diane said, of moratorium maybe. On that until we have a better idea of what the numbers are, see how it impacts other communities. Is it, it's still too early to tell, but as of, as of jumping off the. Jumping off the starting date, I'd say no.
The obvious question is what?
I want to, hold, hold your thought, Tim, because I just wanted to finish my straw poll here, so we got some direction. Commission, Steve?
In the middle, was it? I mean, it's kind of a double edged sword. But it could be good for the town, could not be, you don't know. You try, but then again, I don't want. Effective in town negatively as well. So I'm, I'm in the middle with that, is original.
Okay. And, and I'm going to say I'm not interested in the retail aspect, I'm just.
I mean, the, the, the wait and see sounds like an interesting way to look at.
So we have a four nodes and two on the maybes, two like always.
Professor Rogan, just to, your thought on that is that the gentleman I've been talking to, the property he has already has about forty five thousand square feet. Would add another fifty thousand to it. So essentially, when you're talking about existing already, yeah, it's already industrial. So the nice thing too is he wouldn't be taking a piece of green land, he would be adding on to what's already there. So I mean, from, from that perspective, I think when I look at it and say, can it make sense? That's the kind of place in my mind it makes sense, because it essentially would go into what's already an existing industrial operation that's there. He just essentially would add to it, really wouldn't know the difference, it just would be new buildings and higher security.
I do agree that it is agriculture, but due to the security levels, it is, has to be done like.
Yeah, it might look funny down the tier one highway.
Yeah, and is it, is it going to look like a Dunbar facility? I don't know.
Yeah, one of the questions, if for some reason, ten years down the road, the commission all changes over and everyone decides to go sky high and they want a retail. They can always make an amendment to their zoning regulations and bring them in. So this is not, this is something that we're just deciding to give the commission and council a direction. But like all things, all things are changeable, you know, we're, we're not going to be here in ten years, yeah, so.
You won't, you'd be.
Let's say, Tim, Tim will. Tim, Tim will still be here.
Or in the gray.
Tim will still be here. Tim will still start to tell stories of.
All right, hold on, I'm worried, okay.
If, if you don't mind, yeah, I was, oh, sorry, I was going to clarify that, you know, the, Brian said moratorium. I think it's more about wait and see would be more like a future tax amendment. If you were to prohibit initially, then you might decide to propose a tax amendment down the road. That changed what the tax says, that's what the tax amendments do.
And then it's a good time for discussing.
Then you open up the discussion again.
We open up the discussion. We open up the discussion at that time and whatever the. More information they can do, whatever you can decide.
But in the meantime, I guess the flavor is not to go forward with it.
Retail.
Now. Yeah, now the other, the other aspect of it is the growing aspect. And, you know, this is a little bit more intriguing, I mean. Only because it's a secure location, it's licensed through the state. It requires that, I believe that it requires that the security be armed. I believe that it's very limited traffic to the facility as far as a growing facility. And you have cameras and all sorts of my type stuff.
So let's, let's talk, then we're just going to jump off, all, all over the rest of the stuff I was going to say, we're going to focus on cultivation.
Yeah, let's go that way, because we're.
So, so in terms of cultivation, there's a difference between cultivator and microcultivator. So let's focus on that first. So what I think, I know, a cultivator means a person that is licensed to engage in the cultivation, growing and propagation of the cannabis plant. At an establishment with not less than fifteen thousand square feet of growth space. Okay, so fifteen thousand square feet of growth space. And then a micro cultivator. Means a person licensed to engage in the cultivation, growing and propagation of the cannabis plant. At an establishment containing not less than two thousand square feet and not more than ten thousand. Not less than two, not more than ten square feet of growth space. And then it says prior to any expansion authorized by the commissioner. So that would be the commissioner, consumer production. So two to ten. And not less than fifty. Micro cultivator versus cultivator.
Really taking optical sources to the, all the, all the. I mean, that's a.
So.
Houses, it's not a big building, it's.
So the growth space, I can do that in my backyard. I can, can share with you the.
Oh, she drew, approved that.
So the growth space is defined as a portion of a premises only controlled by producer cultivator. Cultivator that is utilized for the cultivation, growing or propagation of the cannabis plant. And contains cannabis plants in an active group, measured starting from the outermost wall. Of the room containing cannabis plants and continuing around the outside of the group. Growth space does not include space used to cure, process, store harvested cannabis or manufacture cannabis once the cannabis has been harvested. So it's truly just.
About fifteen thousand, it has to be no less than fifteen thousand.
Or a cultivator.
Not more.
Happy.
Not less than.
Not less than, okay, yeah.
So it has to be bigger than one fifty.
I think micro cultivators would do us more flexibility with where we allow them. Because you have a solid design guideline that would make it fit the community more.
Yeah, but do we want micro growers all over the place? No, you don't, you would just want to have just like one. Well, actually, wait a minute, Jennifer, you said it before, you said we can limit the growers in the town, right? We can designate just one grower.
You can limit, yes. So what the law says, we can get to that. So that's, language was revised.
Yeah, because you'd be protecting some court.
So the density cap was, you recall that originally there was a density cap?
Yes.
One retailer and then one micro cultivator?
Yes.
That's been eliminated. That was eliminated with Public Act twenty two dash one three. It's at page twenty five of the public act, I don't know where you can bring it up, did you have it in the mail form from yesterday?
Also, I did remove the.
They did remove the density cap altogether. So they're letting the municipal authorities decide essentially. So, and, and, you know, what I see happening is if you look, who's saying, I haven't studied. I'm, I'm still in the process of studying with the various samples that I gave you. So let's just talk about how I came to give you what I did. So what, what's required into the act is when any action is taken at the municipal level, it's supposed to be reported to the commissioner of the public municipal production. It's going to be C C B. So they're keeping a list, and the list is available online. And the list indicates municipalities, bodies that have entered the moratorium, those who've entered the competition. And then for those that have approved some use, not necessarily all of the licenses, but some use are indicated as approved. So I went through the list and for every municipality for which it indicated, or was indicated that something was approved. I then went to the zoning regulations to see what was passed. In some instances, I was able to find the regulation online and some instances I had to go to the meetings and that's my agenda to, to figure out what they actually passed. So that was like, it was a, it was a blessed space to find what was there as of July first. As far as approved, so I mean, you, you can tell, I mean, there's maybe twenty five to thirty municipalities that have actually acted to allow some use, so.
A hundred sixty nine. Only five.
There's many still in moratorium.
All right, and how long is this moratorium? What, how long can it last?
So the mor, the moratorium, I'll move it up please. Some towns did three, three months, some did six, some did nine, some did a year, some did eighteen months. Some, some, you know, did six or nine months and then added in their six or nine months. I know my, my town guess that they extended theirs, they actually did a survey. They, they planned a survey. And then once they got the survey results, the board saw that they decided to extend the moratorium. I think in part because, you know, they were dealing with the political housing, positive plan, accessory apartment issues, parking restrictions. And just, it's all we want, right? You want to try to work it. Yeah. All right, so. So, so in terms of what the law says, and this is important in terms of your authorities. So it's in subsection B on the bottom there, page twenty five, it goes over to page twenty six. Any municipality may deliver such municipalities or regulations or by local ordinance. One, prohibit establishment or cannabis establishment. Two, establish reasonable restrictions regarding the hours and signage within the limits of such municipality. And three, establish restrictions on the proximity of cannabis establishments and establishments listed in subdivision one of subsection A. Section thirty dash forty six, so that's schools and churches and so forth. The chief zoning official gives foundation report inviting any zoning changes adopted by this body regarding cannabis establishment pursuant to subsection. So that's why we have that list. Unless otherwise provided, next page three. Unless otherwise provided for by a municipality through its zoning regulations or ordinances, a cannabis establishment shall be zoned. As if for any other similar use other than a cannabis establishment would be zoned. Which is exactly why it's important that if you don't have a moratorium, you need to take action. Because otherwise, there's an argument that could be made that, for instance, a retail cannabis establishment that you should be allowed retail use as well. So I just want to put that out there, that would clear you.
Say that, say that last part again.
So if you look at that subsection C.
Yeah.
We're going to start in the highlight of this. Unless otherwise provided for by a municipality through its zoning regulations or ordinances, a cannabis establishment shall be zoned. As if for any other similar use other than a cannabis establishment would be zoned.
But they're talking about retail, all right. Are they talking about retail or are they talking?
Talking about any, doesn't, doesn't really just say retail. So, so it's basically saying that if you allow another similar use. Then that use would be allowed where you allow that similar use. And of course, we know that zoning regulations are permissive in nature, so anything that is not permitted is thus prohibited. And that would be the response to that. But I just note that.
Sure, it's our moratorium.
Your moratorium is through.
I believe it's August twenty fourth. I just read it right before I came up there, but of course I didn't write it down.
Potentially August twenty second, I don't know when that appears in my mind.
Okay, it sounds like we're open, I mean, even the straw poll, it sounds like we're open to the cultivation. Maybe we should consider extending our moratorium while we work through the regulations or notices. No, I don't think it's.
No.
Because I mean, like anything, like any tax amendment for revision, it takes time, we should do meetings, I guess, twenty fourth is, that's a good example, right?
No, what's the, what's, what's the deadline for the state for us?
There is no deadline, there is no deadline.
Oh, so we could do like a whole more time for a year to get us past the P O C D. And give us a chance to look to see, hopefully Maury will have more help on board. And it will give us a chance to see, I mean, but maybe that's too aggressive.
I would love locally. I understand that a lot of your role there, but I would love to see. Someone who matches that. What happened on there, because I know.
So you're interested in areas from a cultivator?
I've driven by there and I see cars, hundreds of cars in line, and five or six cars direct traffic, you know, just one establishment. And, and, you know, I don't know about the.
You're on, you're about inviting someone from the town rather than the grower or the retail.
Yeah, I mean, some, someone, what they experienced in certain towns, say, okay, what did you experience when this retail? What did you?
The same thing as a crispy.
This growing facility.
So I, I have been in communication with a gentleman, his name is Jamie Campbell, I don't know if he called. On the town, from bugs, goods and provisions, Jamie Campbell, I'm not sure if he, I think he was calling every municipality in the state. But I, I believe that they have not only the town establishments, but they have a cultivation license as well. I can call Jamie and I, he's in Massachusetts.
I see, I see Massachusetts in the beginning of it. You see only a couple of billboards from, you know, only a couple of establishments, including ninety one or eighty four. Now, this year, every billboard going that way is a different establishment. You know, as the number of establishments grew, and that's, that's a concern of mine. When this, when this starts growing from town to town. Competition is good, but competition will sway whatever's happening years. They've been in it, three, four years now. That's the best source you can get, some of them up there. A county official maybe, or even the grower itself, you know, probably a mayor is one that knows the, or chairman of planning is only for the state. You know, after you pass your zoning, what happened? After you pass your zoning, what happened? You know. Maybe we could, what happened in our regulations? That takes files through that.
I think, um, I guess as far as extending date, uh. Um, I, I'm not a hundred percent about a year. I think there's negatives and positives to it. I think. I think one negative would be I don't want us to use, use it as an excuse to not to deal with this. Uh, I do think we should move forward. Uh, make a decision to move forward with what we want to do as far as cultivation, retail. On the other hand, within your moratorium. I think positively would be that we'd actually get to see how this. Begins in Connecticut. And then some of those numbers that we talked about earlier as far as retail. You know, in that time, maybe we could get some, you know. Actual information about what the numbers really are and say, hey, you know, is this, is there actually a positive net gain? For Berlin here as far as revenue? So then, then there's, I think, a year. Could be, as long as we don't dilly-dally on it, dilly-dally.
You could make it for six months or eight months and then extend it beyond that. You know, so.
I guess the question is how long is it going to take for us to get that information? How long is it going to take for these businesses to get up and running?
If we set, we set the, um, moratorium for, why per se? Uh, and we find that we get all enough information to make a decision.
Of course you can, of course. Yeah, so, so if, if you decide to act, um, before the moratorium runs, of course you can do that. And there's a wish.
So putting it out a little longer doesn't really affect you.
And then it gives us a chance to see what's going on. Like I said, P O C D, right, and then think of that. And it's kind of like roll over.
I mean, I, I, I got a little bit. I didn't send the last one, so I got a lot. I don't think so in my mind right now.
Sandy. I would kind of lean towards what Commissioner Robin was saying as far as let's extend the moratorium. I do like the idea of a year. If we get it done, still great and we can deal with that. I think that should be our goal is to try and get it done quickly. Or at least have the footprint of what we're looking for. But as Chris had mentioned, you know, Meredith and New Britain are already, you know, looking into this and onboarding it and. You know, those are two towns that are in our districts and stuff. So I think we can get a lot of good information from them to see what's going on. Um, and I don't think, you know, I mean, I look at it just three percent, but you know, if you do a million dollars in retail, it turns out about. You know, we could potentially get three or four other businesses in town that have that same revenue. So it's not like it's going to change the footprint of Berlin and it's not like you, you use it any way you want. Um, so I think we keep that in mind as well. It's not a big care of that.
Our decision is how we want to approach the coming aspect of it. Because that's less graphic. That's, that's very.
So we could, we could move up moratorium and if we come up with a retail idea. We can copy the moratorium on that and move the retail and still go with the, the other, right?
Oh, what you just.
That's right.
Yeah.
With it up a little.
Yeah. Well, I think the focus is just to figure out what we want to do with the moratorium. Where we want to allow the use. And then of course, you have the two, you have the cultivator and you have the micro cultivator. So we have to have that discussion too. And see if you allow them both or just one.
Massachusetts, the major cities started it.
What I'm hearing from everybody personally is that we're interested in dealing with this, but we just need more time. So we're obviously not going to get it done tonight.
Yeah, but I think we need to give, um, them some direction, I think.
So, I, I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of the discussion, but one of the thoughts I was having while, um, you were talking was. That from the earlier discussion, I'm hearing that you. Been, unless it's evolved, um, that a regulation that didn't allow for retail. But, so maybe work on that portion first. With the moratorium and then the moratorium for the rest, you know, and, and you can split it up. I guess that's what I'm trying to say is. You can chunk it. I don't think you have to unless, um, council advises differently. I don't think you have to. Take the whole picture and try to digest it all at once. You can say, okay, we know where we're headed. For the retail portion and, and maybe you do, maybe you don't. Um, and let's give staff direction to write something with regard to that. And we want more information on the cultivators, so extend the moratorium a little, you know, or not. Not unextend the moratorium, not, not remove it. Reel it, not repeal the moratorium for that.
So we would, we would limit it, right? Because at this point with a moratorium is, is disallowing as an application with regard to any cannabis use. So what we would do would be if you don't want to pursue retail is we would do a prohibition with regard to retail. Um, and then, uh, we would draft a new moratorium to reflect that. Uh, you do, do not wish to receive an application with regard to the other uses, regulations and such. Um, so that's, that's what we do, I think. Um, now, in, in your pocket, I just wanted, I did give you some nearby communities on purpose, of course, around the list. Um, some, some of the regulations are really quite lengthy in terms of like, for instance. Um, the documents for these ones are very lengthy, uh, because there are samples from the towns that I gave you. Um, so, uh, Maureen, if you'll go to page seventeen for Cromwell in this first.
Right package.
By doing that with a large, Maureen, we can also allow us to kind of pen the women transport services as well. That might want to come next.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, because you're going to want to consider, uh, the transport piece, right? Um, be- because you're going to want the micro cultivator, the. You gotta think about that. You gotta think about, you know, what, what is the connection? So you're, so you're on the right page.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't think that was, uh, just.
Urgent care and everything. It's right in that plaza. It's between Connecticut, Bethlehem.
They're not the same.
So, okay. So again, just, just to kind of point out and I know, um, you know, we'll get you these scans rather than you having to click on the links. I think it's easier. We have scans in the future for standard. Where to go directly. So we will do that. But, um, so one town, right, that's, uh, Cromwell. Okay, so Cromwell, they are going to allow, and Maureen has saw, page sixteen, seven zero, you'll see on the bottom, there's an app.
I want to share the screen. I'm not sharing it with the recording.
Um, so, uh, you'll see that there's an application or request to amend the zoning regulations. To add a certain section to allow retail sales and, um, and cannabis related, uh, retail sales and cannabis cannabis related products. And the highway business zone district, so they're designated a specific district for retail. And the, a different district, um, the industrial zone district to allow for the cultivation. So there's a lot of that, you know, there's a lot of very narrow, um, districting for the use. So, um, that's Cromwell and, uh, there's discussion here, um. Some instances, there's not a lot of discussion, there's, there's more. So, but you, you mentioned your, and then. Uh, I also have a number in Newington. Let's just get there. Oh, um, Maureen, if you go, actually, if you go to. Uh, page. Because in the next set of minutes, they actually talk about it at page twenty. Yeah, at page twenty, they give a little summary. They give a little summary of that. Again, this is. And they're talking about specifically here, um, so, uh. Um, Mr. Copper is, um, I believe their director of planning and development.
Yes, he is.
Score up for extra problem.
Yep.
Um, so he's talking right here about, um, a couple of issues raised at the last public hearing. Is included whether cannabis retail stores should be permitted in freestanding buildings or strip centers, multi-tenant building, distance of real quiet setbacks for the uses. And churches, the facilities, schools, parks and residences. Um, distance required except for between, um, medical cannabis store hybrid, medical retail, so don't retail. And then he, he did some research with regard to separation distances. Um, so that's something else, you, you know, the separation distance from other uses, um, is something that. Folks have spent a lot, a lot of time on. Um, so there's a listing there within that's accurate. I think that, yes, he does talk about, you know, as an example.
Once you look like you've read it, I'll scroll.
This is for the retail. Yeah. One. I mean, okay, here we are.
So we just work first.
They're looking at Meredith right now. Call to that one.
No, it's, no, no. I'm just, no, I'm thinking, you know. Well, I'm trying to think of where they could send. I mean, we're pretty built. I could take down a couple houses and I guess we sort of keep going to. Oh, yeah. We gotta bring that, listen. We gotta bring that. Well, yeah.
So it's just page thirty. So, um, page thirty, thirty-one in this first.
Yeah.
Portion. So this is actually, this is East Hartford.
Okay.
So they do have a retail provision. Note, note, these are all special permit. And I didn't get to that, that part in the public act. Um, but that language has not changed on the public act. I, I would have to do another email to you and kind of point out some of this stuff. So I want to kind of get to this part. But, um, it, yes, so, um, and, and, you know, or if, or the law says. Um, or other affirmative approval. Um, for any retailer or micro cultivator seeking to be located within a municipality. So. Um, but yes, we're seeing many, many special permits, special exception, um, standards, uh, for these uses. Uh, coming out of the, the municipalities that have acted so far. So we see on page thirty, again, this is East Hartford. This, uh, first, uh, section for the business being three zone has a special permit used cannabis retail, cannabis hybrid retailer. But then we start to see the cultivation as we scroll down, Maureen. We have, uh, in industrial three or industry three I three zone, special permit used for cannabis cultivator, food and beverage manufacturer. Or delivery service. Very simple. Um, uh, next page, industry three again. Cannabis micro cultivator, micro food and beverage manufacturer or micro delivery service. So again, seeing obviously a lot in, in the industrial zone for cultivation.
Jesus. That's delivery.
That, Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Yeah.
I was writing it down.
Production and or storage of cannabis should not create emission of dust, pollution, smoke, waste, noise, vibrations, traffic. And environments when it catches, just where they found it. But getting to New Britain. So New Britain is in this pack, starts to, page thirty-eight lines. So they have medicinal in one section of their zoning ordinances. Two seventy dash forty, dash forty.
Maureen, I saw.
Another case called more, more recently.
There's another page here, update. Yeah, this is a one regulation. There we go. So here we have where it was updated.
So there's special exceptions.
This is New Britain and their update.
All right. Well. All right, I think we have this direction. This is the start. It's interesting to see what the other towns do. Some of them, I have in Britain, it's kind of like. If I were the planner, I'd be like, whoa. If I were the planner, I'd be like, wow.
I just, I was just calling her, a bus driver was eating gummies. From a little bag of gummies. He didn't know what's in the place, you know? Just topping them up, ate the whole bag and passed out the ceremony.
You're just gonna look hopefully at Newington. I just want to show you something.
All right, hang on guys.
It's this one.
Yes, this is Newington's. So if you go to the end.
Of that page or this section. Yeah.
So they have security requirements, which at the very end, they have a concentration provision. It says, so as to prevent the over-concentration of cannabis retailers and local cultivators until June period twenty twenty-four. The town plan is only conditioned from not creating any more or less than even more than, until, then it should say until or to combine retailers and hybrid retailers is defined here in the town of Newington. Or which would result in more than one local cultivator is defined here in the town of Newington. So just a heads off. So there, they are a town that didn't do that. So that was done June ninth in, in response to density capping removed. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, I don't know how many, how many municipalities actually realized that the density cap was removed. Cause I still hear people and see people commenting about one and one.
I think I just had an article that actually said it. The article incorrect.
There wasn't, it wasn't, I think it was in the, uh, Business Journal or something that had it wrong. It had, it had quite a bit of wrong information. Because again, the law is so complicated. Um, and you know, there, there are provisions that have changed. One thing too, I just want to point out, we talked about equity and this is a big issue. Everybody's assuming that everyone's going through the lottery. And it's not true. Not true. The equity joint ventures are not going through the lottery. So they're, they're allowing the app licenses. But they still need the local approval. You know, they gotta match up with the local location.
So they don't have a limit coming.
Well, you know, I'll send you some information with regard to that because there is a rule out, um, to it. And there are certain licenses, you know, that they're not all coming out at the same time. And, you know, one of the questions that I had, because I, I was asked to draft solely on, um, medicinal dispensary regulation. And I had a question as to whether or not they were even gonna continue to allow licenses for that specific use alone. Um, because it seems that, you know, from some of the articles that I was reading about the existing medicinal dispensaries, that they were all becoming hybrid retailers. Um, and so, you, you know, I was trying to get answers to the question of, are, are you gonna allow that use by itself that, you, you know? Um, or is that going wet? Um, so I hit a number of calls and did not get a direct answer about that. But it, it's clear that at this point in time, there's no specific just dispensary license issuing. So, cause if you look at the press releases and so forth, so. But I'll give you some information. It's, it's, I can't, I'm gonna admit to you, I'm sorry. I can't get this all of it from my memory. It's just too much.
So whoever definitely we got a license, definitely go to the highest license they can get. Or put in for the highest. Thing that you get, right? Not just the poor thing.
So there was, for some of the licenses, there was no limit on the number of submissions for the lottery. Applications for the lottery. I don't know if anybody read that. So they got, I don't know, fifteen thousand applications and. Well, they're, they do now. Yeah, there, there's a limit in terms of the number.
At least we got some direction on that. We have another item on the agenda.
Yeah.
So. We're not, we're not a select. Oh. Bad place. Those licenses won't be going with this, right? So. There's gonna be the first license.
Okay, oh, is this the out of doubt thing?
So this was pre, um, we believe was previously distributed, but recopied for tonight on, um, the accessory dwelling unit and parking limitation. So just, uh, you know, get it back every, to everybody's. Right? You haven't called for the next thing. I'm jumping.
No, 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 because we, we do wanna, you know, move along. So anyway, so we, we've got that as far as the cannabis retail versus the other stuff. And do we need to make any kind of formal vote on a moratorium for the growers or or, or just recommended to the council?
I will say this, why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we put it down for your next meeting agenda? What, what is the next meeting date for it?
Yeah, next week.
Next.
The twenty.
So it's late.
So the town council doesn't need to do anything about cannabis?
Oh, they don't know.
No.
No, I think it's.
I think, uh, we should talk about exactly what you want the, the new moratorium to say. Um, and that can be done at next week's meeting. And then it'll be done for the fourth. It'll get noticed for the fourth. And that's plenty of time before your, one expires. Okay? And that's fine. All I'm going to.
Yes. Yes. Excellent. Thank you. And Maureen, how's that, as far as the, the next go around our meeting, how bad is it? The next meeting?
It's, it's fairly reasonable. And I'm not gonna jinx it by saying anymore. At this moment, we think it's, it's reasonable.
Because I don't wanna tie it to the first of time. I wanna make sure we have.
So next week's meeting has one special permit on it. Um, or, uh, it's a fill permit. Or rather, it's a fill permit. It's not a special permit. Um, and then a couple of other just items that are added.
All right, well, then everybody else has to stand down. Close the wall. All right, okay. So now on to this.
So on, on to this topic. I think we, we've talked about it a couple of weeks, but we'll revisit it again, because it's, it's not easy one either. Um, so in terms, just a reminder on the opt-out. Um, it needs to happen not only at the planning and zoning level, um, but also at the level of the legislative body, which in your town is your town council. So, uh, the opt-out provisions, you'll see they're similar, um, uh, from both. And, and what will need to happen here, I did this a bunch of times. Um, what will need to happen here is you need to have one public hearing for accessory apartments A D U's and you have a separate public hearing on the dwelling unit parking limitations. Okay, there are two different statutes. They have two different opt-out provisions. I would not combine them. Because I think that there's different issues with each. Okay? Um, there's no reason why you can't do them in the same night. Of course you can't. Um, because, you know, they're, they're, they're not so enormous that you wouldn't be able to get through them if they did one night. Um, so in terms of the opt-out itself, the procedure is there, one, two, three, four, on that first page. You're gonna hold a public hearing on the proposed opt-out. Um, subject to the standard notice and timeframes for such hearings. And then you have to affirmatively decide by a two-thirds vote to opt out within the statutory time limit. So within sixty-five days of the completion of the hearing. And then you have to state in the record the reason for your decisions. And then publish notice of decision within fifteen days in a newspaper that has substantial circulation in the municipality. So this needs to happen again for each item at your level and at the town council level. So I've been asked the question, would, would it passes two-thirds at P and Z? Does it pass at two-thirds at town council? It's required by statute to pass at two-thirds at town council as well.
So you need to must, and it's to schedule a date for a public hearing of the opt-out.
So that, that's what you would do if you're inclined to opt out. Um, we would notice it. I have language I've drafted, um, for the purpose of seeing. Um, and, uh, if you so desire, if that's the route that you would like to go, do you, if you wanna revisit the statutory, you could do that. I think we've done it more than once. Um, and it is in here, but, um, Maureen and I could certainly, um, make some recommendations to you for reasons why you might desire to opt out. Um, if you wanna offer any guidance to us with regard to that, um, at this point.
So one thing I understood the last, one thing I understood the last time we were talking about is if we were to ever accept this, we'd be accepting it as it is. We have no flexibility. And making it a more burdened.
That is exactly right.
So that would be one of my.
You can't overlook, and I pointed out, um, and it's, it's on, uh, page three. Before the dwelling unit parking limitation. Um, I put in that last sentence critically, if a municipality does not opt out of the E D U limitations, section eight dash two O subsection E states that a municipality may not use or impose additional standards beyond those set forth in subsections A to D inclusive of this section. So if you do not opt out, the expectation is that if you do not have any regulations on accessory apartments, or if you have regulations that conflict with the statute, that you are going to amend your regulations so that they are in compliance with the statute. And what this happens says to me, and I think it's a very clear, I don't, I don't think there's any ambiguity about it, is that, um, if, if you decide at some point in time that you want to amend your regulations, you cannot do that until the legislature acts. Because your regulations must comply with what the statute says.
We're gonna opt out. Straw pole, uh, starting at that end, Steve. Opting out, okay. Opting out, opting out.
So.
Let's go.
So Maureen, I'm gonna make a motion to do that for a deep debate to spend.
Yeah, how about this next meeting?
Can we, we have enough time? Not, you know, you, we don't have enough notice time for the next meeting. You'd be scheduling anything for the August fourth meeting. Let me look at my calendar again.
And that, isn't it just to set the public hearing?
Now, you can decide now that you wanna set the public hearing.
If you wanna hold a public hearing on August fourth, you can.
Okay.
You have time to hold the public hearing.
So while you, you have, you generally or often put on your agenda that you'd be setting a public hearing, you're not required to do that. So you can set the public hearing when you have this discussion and it was noticed as a discussion tonight. It shouldn't be, it's not in conflict. They're discussing it.
I'm sorry, the, for the cannabis, were that also gonna be August fourth? Is that our call?
In, in terms of, um.
Extending the moratorium.
Agenda extending the moratorium, yes.
Okay, so that's gonna be. That would be a public hearing this one.
I mean, it's pretty quiet, right?
Um, meaning as far as, uh, you know, the, uh, people with the accessory dwelling and stuff, I don't think we're gonna get anything. I don't think we're gonna get anything on the parking accessory.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't.
So. So the issue with the accessory dwelling too, and I have pointed this out. Um, remember that part of the strategies uh, for the affordable housing plan is you are looking at the accessory apartment issue. Um, so, you know, in all likelihood, and, and as the chair has pointed out more than once, right, you know, you are in the P O C D process. So I'm sure as part of that process, you're having discussions with regard to your regulations concerning accessory apartments as well. So, you know, it, it is the expectation that, uh, as far as implementing even the affordable housing plan, you're gonna be undergoing a review. So that's part of the implementation schedule. In the affordable housing plan.
Yeah, it definitely has.
So what do we decide? We decided to have.
So I believe you're, you're talking about scheduling the public hearing for the, um, with regard to, um, the accessory dwelling um, unit opt-out for August fourth. And then you'd be additionally, well, we haven't gotten to the discussion yet on parking, but um, thinking you'd be scheduling that public hearing for the same night.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do.
So I'll make the motion to schedule the public hearing for opting out for the August fourth meeting for the accessory apartment slash accessory dwelling units. And then I'll also make a, um, step of that motion.
Oh, second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rogan, second by Ms. Rossi for the discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
I will also make the motion to schedule a public hearing for the opting out of the dwelling unit parking limitations for August fourth.
On the second.
Second by Diane Torcy for the discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
And then that is also the night that we're going to extend the moratorium.
So you'll note on that next week, because you're gonna have a discussion about what the content of that's going to be. So you don't need to make a motion tonight?
Okay.
Let's, don't give it enough time.
Sure, all right.
Yes, and you have one more item on your agenda.
So I was asked to add, um, a discussion regarding a discussion and scheduling of a public hearing for a moratorium on multifamily housing applications and/or any adjustments to that. You know, whether it be multifamily housing applications, multifamily, you know, other wording, um, some directions. And, um, and whether you want to do that. Um, I did, um, fairly quickly, because of the way the week has gone, um, drafted a very quick moratorium language and I would rather re, re, reread it one more time before I distribute it to all of you. Um, but I do have it and it can be distributed in time for a public hearing to get set. If, if that's what you want to give me direction to do, I can have that language well before the public hearing, or when the public hearing needs to be noticed.
Okay, so. Well, it's open for discussion. I mean, me myself, I was saying, I would, I, I hold six months, only because, I mean, we're already in July, right? We're still in July, yeah. Um, and I'm just thinking about the workload. And it was more of a consideration what's happening in Maureen's office. And I know she's been doing a great job keeping up with it, but I don't wanna wear her to the town or show up and just hand her a notice and leaves because she's burning herself out. So I'm trying not to burn her out. And I think she's done a great job holding it together so far. And hopefully, we're gonna get some more personnel on board. I mean, do we have a zoning officer at all?
We, we have a, an assistant town planner, the new position, starting early August. And they're hoping, we've been interviewing for the zoning officer and have so can't hold full candidates.
Yeah, so.
But no.
The zoning officer, especially with somebody who's not familiar with this town, it's gonna take at least six or eight weeks to get on board with what's happening. And then. The zoning officer, especially with somebody who's not familiar with this town, is gonna take at least six or eight weeks to get on board with what's happening and then getting caught up. Trying to understand what's happening with a different file. But that still leaves Maureen with the pressure. So if you're taking that, that just two months, it's just eaten up with her still doing the same old stuff. So that, when I said six months, I, I knew I'm open to negotiate. I'm just trying to ease her burden, to give her a chance to break in the new personnel. And then also for her to catch a breath. Because we're still finishing this P O D C D thing, and so she's still going to all these meetings. You know, I'm just trying to lighten it a little bit, but you know, you guys, feedback.
How much longer is it?
Um, I believe it's this coming winter that we expect to have the final draft in the fall. You know, the timeline got pushed a little bit as the Affordable Housing Plan got pushed forward and, and left. I don't have that timeline in front of me, but I think, so it's due September of twenty twenty-three. So it's due, basically, it has to be. It has to have gone through public hearing, it has to have gone through town council, it has to be done by September. We can make it, and the town can make it effective very close to that date, even if they approve it. Prior to that, which we expect our consultant and the process through the Planning and Zoning Commission to happen several months before that. Late winter next year is what we're, the target is.
My thought was, I know that you mentioned last time that part of the P O C D is to have our consultant actually study the effectiveness of the B T D zone overlay. See if this multi-family housing. Is beneficial in Berlin. So I don't, so from what it sounds like, that could actually be longer than six months. And I mean, I would be open to seeing the results. Come back from your consultant or in a live moratorium with that. To make sure that we're going in the right direction, whereas it might be more than six months.
This. So.
Then maybe you would get some input. In terms of what their thoughts are. That they need to do.
I, I, I'm listening, I, that's what they just said. So I'm listening what you're looking for.
Could be less than six months too, I just.
Housing units.
The language of the reasoning?
Yeah.
Oh, I saw, I was getting a lot of. I have a lot of those notes. So we, so at the last public hearing, we also discussed, I think, I believe it was discussed at the last public hearing, but. I wanted to pull together some of the thoughts I'd heard, which is what got me to put this on the agenda as well. Was that we do have. The, all the approved developments so far, and. I'm thinking it's probably somewhere around, I didn't end up being able to check all the numbers. But upwards of four hundred units that have either applied for permits or, or have permits already. For construction to be done, site work is being done. They're at that stage of application and/or have gotten permits or going through those permits on active construction sites, not just. They were approved in, yeah, maybe within the, the site plan time period, they'll, they'll do something. These are all active, and I think that's upwards of four hundred units without doing a total purge of the system. Um, as you mentioned, the updated plan of conservation and development and the Affordable Housing Plan, which is, which has formulated implementation. Within it to consider, and it's all gonna be wrapped up together with the P O C D, which I heard all the way you say. As well as the consultant being contracted, as was mentioned, for working on regulations with regard to multi-family, including the B T D zone. But kind of tweaked it a little, and there may be some other things they're looking at as well that came out of the Affordable Housing Plan. So those are the. The reasons that I had preliminarily noted. I'm sure there may be more that come out during the public hearing or as this gets finalized.
So we would anticipate the P O C D to be done in another three months, or something like that, correct? I mean, I think, and six months is kind of safe.
Now, I just do wanna point out, we have gotten a new application today. And until the moratorium is in place, anyone who makes the application. Is a pending application and they move along absent the moratorium. So, yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody realizes that timeline, as well as the timeline for scheduling the same.
We wanna schedule the. The public hearing for the moratorium on the fourth as well.
Can you do it next week or?
I don't know.
There's not enough time to publish.
Because it's a text memo.
Basically, anything you need a public hearing for, you need at least two weeks. It's a ten-day notice, a minimum. I, we basically need twelve to get into the paper, so it's two weeks, you're two weeks ahead of meeting. And is the, do you have any discussion or? Want me to just check the language with regard to it being multi-family developments? And that's what I've, what I encompassed based on what I heard, but if that's not. Okay, multi-family development, okay.
But I'll make a motion to add to schedule for the agenda. A moratorium on multi-family developments for six months.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, we have a second for the discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Let's pose some. It's gonna be focused force as well.
Fill up our hour.
Yeah, all right. No, no one else can come in. All right, Ted, I think it's it. We're gonna need a box. And so I've asked for a motion to adjourn, and it is number one. I'll make that motion. Okay, motion by Ms. Dorsey. Oh, wait a minute. Steve, Steve, by a bunch, you got the motion.
For sure.
Giving you the motion. And second by Ms. Dorsey. For the discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.